...business is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add under Old Business CD and update on the treatment.
Okay.
And construction.
About a second.
Second.
Any other additions or subtractions? All right. All in favor, please, to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. It's adopted if you've updated the trail. All right, minutes from the Washington meeting review, I think you guys were sort of receiving last week. Comments or edits, me and I sort of already cooked our English. Are you working on it?
She did, she left them. Totally material.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
What's the second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, minutes are adopted. All right, for the mayor's report, I think I saw several of you at the open house at Rush River last weekend. It was great to see it all come to fruition. I know Barbara's been entertaining calls, spoke to calls for utilities for the town. So it's really, really wonderful thing that was most remarkable to me was to see a family of five moving into one of the townhouses. Unfortunately, one of our constituents passed away before I could see, ah, say, ah, he got children in town. But that was great to see, and I feel they'll bring some new dynamism to the community.
Very sadly, when you went through those apartments and looked at the quality of construction, the attention to detail, you know, it adds a lot to the town of Washington. And I hope the board supervisors also takes a post book so that they support this type of housing elsewhere in the county, which is part of the comprehensive plan, because I think it's going to have really great dynamic here. So it was done conceptually well, thoroughly pleased with the final result.
Couldn't agree more. All right, in other construction about town, I know Jim Ado and his team have been talking with the county. They should be wrapping up their permitting for the demolition at the old packing shed. So that should commence in the coming weeks, with any luck. On that note, we will be dealing at our main meeting, we'll have a public hearing to deal with the site plan for potential work at the old newspaper building for Jim's case. And then also be doing, considering a lot line, we'll do a joint hearing with the planning commission to consider that and also a lot line adjustment that was requested by the end. The main meeting will be packed, we will be also handling the public hearing for the budget. And presuming a motion moves tonight, we will hold a public hearing about the rates for the water and sewer system.
Maybe we should provide coffee.
But I was going to say packed dinners.
Maybe we should start. Maybe we should start six o'clock.
We'll conspire about that as we get a little closer to the area, perhaps a little earlier than night given the agenda. So that allows to hit our markets for passing the budget by Jim. It does mean that we will probably put off the public hearing, depending on the conversation tonight and decisions by the council. A public hearing and vote on the sale of any property would probably be held at our June meeting. Just one, time for submissions and two, just given our busy schedule.
I have a question about the packing shed. I mean, you talked about demolition, but we approved something a year ago, just about a year ago, which would be a restoration of the, I mean, is the same plan in place for whether it's going to be.
Correct, yeah. He just had to get an additional permit from the county for the demolition, as I understand it.
Okay, so is the demolition whole building?
No, no, it's just that shed additions, which the ARB approved. That'll complete my march of the mayor's report. Matt Trever.
Thank you. Before we get into what else, the planning events auditors now require not just that the electric treasurer, but the town council needs to make a motion to have Gil Swift treasurer, specific in those words, be appointed as a public funds custodian. So one person has to be responsible for public funds. I promise not to take him to Spain with me next month. So I'm going to make a motion to saying, I moved Gil Swift treasurer to be appointed as the public funds custodian.
I'll move on that as soon as we get through, as part of new business. And I would ask for a motion to amend that to have that as new business.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So under new business, we'll handle the public funds custodian in addition. Quite a title, I'm not sure. New business. Okay.
Then when we got the P and L information in front of you, what is upcoming? Definitely look at these numbers, you need to realize that it's now time for the sewer bond payment. Seven hundred and eight thousand dollars will come off the bottom line there. And also we have the generator and the pad, that will be much Brad.
The generators paid for.
Generator paid.
Yeah, it's in the capital expense.
Okay.
And the pads buy a foot in repair maintenance.
Okay, perfect, thanks. That's it?
Any questions about that? Brad?
Continuing on with related to the water. I've got to check, make sure our Christian has this permit pulled, we see that, and where they sit in their schedule to actually do the installation. The other thing is, we were originally going to put a soft starter on that motor and.
Set the at the wellhouse.
At the wellhouse, right. And after some discussions, with the folks at ESS and another group, what I'm going to do is get a price to actually add a BFD in place of a soft starter. This will further improve the life of the pump motor and can also cut our electricity fees. So I've got to get that number. We can get it done as the installation going through, so there won't be a delay in that aspect. At the treatment plant, we have all materials to rebuild the airway system. So I'm going to try and start it up this week, work with the ESS and others to come up with a work plan. As soon as that's in place and everyone's onboard and approved, then we'll schedule to actually execute that project. So then hopefully with that, we'll make that operate a little bit better. And we'll watch that for about six months and then.
Makes sense.
Right.
I should thank Brad for all of his work in looking for replacement parts in the amount of money that he is saving in the town. That's a solid thing.
I should have mentioned that we may have a motion to add for two additional water connections.
Yes.
I have a question before you do. It shows my ignorance, you talked about not having a soft starter with a BFD. What is a BFD?
It's called a variable frequency drive.
A VFD, okay.
Yeah. And so what it does is when you tell it to turn off, it's going to start the motor slowly as opposed to just like flipping the light switch from which you get an inrush of power that over time adds a variable to your motor. And this way, we're going to bring it up slowly, we're going to match it to a flow of pressure required needed to flow through the filters and deliver the water to the tower. But that's where the motor is running excessively. Because right now what we do is, when you turn it on, there's what's called a restrictor plate in the pipe. And it's basically a plate to hold it in. So the pump runs as hard as it can, but it can only pass so much water. So you're kind of running against a kettle of time. And again, just as we're a pair, with the BFD, we can reduce that so that the appropriate amount of water is being pushed and we can actually remove that plate.
Oh, wow.
So it's a better setup than.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
And also, I failed to mention earlier, flushing the system, one on May?
Right.
Day one.
Yes.
Morning.
You'll see the fire hydrants open up once the water runs through.
Yeah. Also, the state has us in a drought watch. So we're not going to be applying any restrictions or anything. But if you go out digging your gardens, the surface inch looks moist, but as soon as you start to get down or if you're looking at mountains, everything's pretty dry. So I just would ask people to think when you're running water, not waste water, just in case.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Crammer. Yeah, I think you're muted.
Muted, okay, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
So, yeah, three things to report on tonight. One is that the three judge panel did meet on the voluntary settlement agreement. At the scheduled hearing on April 4th, they held the hearing. They did not have any question of substance of the voluntary settlement agreement. They approved the draft order involving its attachments. Waiting on a final copy of that back in the post office. The boundary line adjustment will become effective at midnight on May 1st. So that's, that was one thing. Second thing is a related subject, the Leggett Lane road maintenance agreement. I'm expecting a revision to the previously seen draft agreement that omits any of the property owners adjacent to Leggett Lane except for Rush River Commons and would split the cost of the road maintenance from time to time to between town and Rush River. So, you know, the problem, as we know, is that the post office ownership is difficult to nail down, track down, and get anything from them. Plus, they've, you know, already been using Leggett Lane, so they're going to be a difficult customer. And the only other adjacent property owner does not currently have an access from Leggett Lane. So at such time as that property owner seeks to connect to Leggett Lane, we can discuss the appropriate amount of road maintenance payments and responsibility based on expected traffic flows. And then the third thing I wanted to remind you of, this is certainly not urgent, but I would ask you to do it sometime in the next month or two, is to readopt your current remote appearance policy, which was adopted about a year ago. Current state law requires you to readopt it every year. This year in particular, there's no reason to make any changes because there's been no changes to state law that are taking effect July 1st. So if you like, if you're happy with the policy as written, you can just readopt it at any point in a future agenda. Senator, you can answer your questions.
Thanks, Martin.
I guess the one question I have, Martin, is with the new arrangement between Rush River and the town, as the town is basically picking up, I assume, the responsibilities that should be on the owner of the post office. Does the town have recourse to try to seek the appropriate funds from the owners of the post office building?
Well, we've been trying that for a couple of years now without any success. And in fact, Mr. Garsen put some pressure on the county not to issue the final occupancy permit for the building, for the post office building, until such time as we got some response out of them. But the property has changed hands a number of times, it's made it difficult to track down who exactly is responsible. And in terms of, you know, getting money from some out of state organization that we don't have a contract with, it's going to be a difficult process that may not be worth the amount of money that we would be getting if we pursued that through the legal process. So my advice at this point would be, until we see what their maintenance bills would be and how they ought to be a portion, that we just let the sleeping dog lie.
Does the, I guess I have one other question. In the road maintenance agreement, I know the town had, when it was just the town, the town was, took over responsibility for plowing the road for snow. Is that part of the road maintenance agreement?
I haven't looked at it in many months. I have to look at it again to answer that question. I suppose so. I do think it does cover that, but don't quote me until I look at it again. And obviously, it's a private road. You know, the fact of the matter is, you don't have to do anything with regard to that road. It's just that that's your access to the sewer treatment plant, and you want to keep it relatively clear.
Right, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garsen is not with us tonight, but you had his report.
I, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. Garsen isn't here. I was reading through it, the first two paragraphs don't make a lot of sense unless what he has is February 24th should be February 25th, and that the plan is presented in early 2026. That would be my assumption.
I will as well. I'm asking to send an email clarifying that members of the council. Surprise. About the planning. What's that?
We definitely did that.
Do you have any other comments from the planning commission? ARB, I think, has a packed agenda later this month. Let's see right at the bottom of Mr. Garsen's report. Other questions about the report, one I should thank. Martin, thank you for all your help in getting the boundary line to a final resolution. Feels like we've been talking, just talking about it for, you know, I guess almost, you know, six years at this point. Give her time a little bit. It was nice to be in court that day, to see them come back and promptly approve what we worked on. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, turning to Old Business, discussion of possible land sale of the lot 28-1-15. The thing that we need to come to a resolution on tonight, so as I mentioned earlier, I think we'd like to move toward having proposals in from potential buyers and a public hearing on the potential sale of land at our June meeting. I'll ask Barbara in a minute to just sort of back up the calendar there for when we need them to submit their packets and for public notification. But what we have to decide on tonight is what we would like in the proposal from the folks who are interested in purchasing that land. I've sketched out here three, three things. We also should discuss covenants on the land ahead of sale. But the three things that I suggested for, to be included in any submission from a buyer is the, a rough size acreage wise of the portion of the lot they would be interested in purchasing. A rough sketch of that, of that lot, which I think from two of the interested parties we already have, I would offer Barbara to help with anybody who needs revision, help revising a graphic which we could share during the meeting. And then, of course, their bid for that, for that property would be the three basic things that would need to be in that package. Any additions or suggested additions or subtractions from that? Obviously, they'll have the ability to reject any bid, should we choose to.
I think the documents have already been discussed.
Yeah, just make sure that we have that. We'll talk about anything you would like in the proposals.
Is there more than one interested buyer?
There are three.
Three, in the same parcel?
In, in parts of the same parcel. So we're talking about roughly three acres total, I think, of that. That's reserving a couple acres around the, you can get plants and also moving the line just north of where the trail will come through, so the trail will remain on town property.
Would it make sense to get an appraisal of how much this land is worth?
We have the tax value for the assessment for the entire parcel. I think I would operate from that, I'm not sure if it makes sense, but we could ask for, for at least.
And can we refuse all bids?
We can refuse any, they don't have to accept them, yeah.
The other, I guess the only other thing is, one of the potential bidders had talked about a land swap. I don't know whether that's going to be something that's worthwhile for us to pursue, but I certainly don't want to exclude it at this point as an option. So I would say if the bidder wants to put in two options, either a financial war proposal for a land swap of some sort that would be advantageous to both parties, then I wouldn't preclude that from being part of the offer he or she might pay.
Any thoughts?
I'm not quite sure.
I don't think a land swap would, should really come into. Yeah, because there's no money to take care of it or do anything with it from the same point. So anybody's welcome to, to have a land swap. Either or, we can accept or reject.
That's fine. The way that I, the mayor was saying it, and, yeah, I think he was trying to be very clear about it, but I just want to make sure that if, if one of the bidders wanted to add that as a possibility.
Oh, sure, we can. But then we then define the financial value associated, or their, their thoughts on that.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Thoughts? Maybe it's one thing I did want to turn to in addition to that was just to say that, one, obviously, we would say that there are covenants first, have access, that normal, that would be access for the, you know, the utilities that needs across through that property, like whether or not we would want to be, affirm of the saying in the placing covenant that they cannot be developed in any way other than building, you know, the construction of small town buildings or whatever. I can work, we work hard on what the final version of that sounds like.
Yeah.
Now, maybe I missed this, when is the cutoff date?
We haven't said it yet. I don't rely on Barbara, once we decide to move forward, it gives the, to back up the dates from June to tell us from our June meetings. I want to get through the, what we want to do, and we'll back into that, so.
When do we formally adopt covenants and things like that? After we get the bids or?
I think we would put it in the advertising to say this in the public account. We've got to sort of advise in advance. I would refer to our student council, but I believe in the advertising, we would have to make it clear that there are covenants on the property before we often do.
So does that mean that we need to, as a council, come together with what those covenants will be?
That's why I was asking the question. I think it's.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, we're going to have to.
Yes.
Wrapping up conversation, so. All right, so, so I would do that we proceed, that we proceed with the sale.
Or just bids.
What's that? Proceed with the advertising for sale. Portions of the lot that I can identify, that we set a date. Barbara, what's the, what are we going to back up to?
So the public hearing would be on the 9th. So our arguments adjust of the packets be submitted by May 26th.
And advertise that the council is open to receiving bids for portions of that lot. That those bids should include a size, a rough estimate of the size of the portion of the lot purchaser wishes to buy, a rough sketch of graphic of the, of the lot, the portion of the lot the person wishes, the party wishes to buy. Barbara, the town administrator can help with the production of those graphics if needed. And then a bid for the property, for the portion of the lot that they wish to purchase. And that bid could include a potential swap of property with an assigned value for, or the bidder's assessment, assessment of the value of the property to be swapped.
You agree on that?
And who would be responsible for the, the survey?
They will be responsible for the, I think we've said in a couple before, but they will be responsible for a final survey.
Okay.
Before we do this, yeah.
Okay.
We can put that in the advertisement, and then the advertisement will include a covenant that will limit any future development of that property. And that those bids must be received in the later May 26th of this year, and that the town council will hold a public hearing at our May, our June 9th meeting to consider those bids, to unseal those bids and consider them, and so forth, so on.
I'll make that motion, unless you're making a motion, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? All right, and I'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. Barbara will take care of the, of the public advertisement, we'll move forward for a second. The second item on the agenda is review of the water and sewer rates that came up a couple of months ago. You have the packet before you, the very thoughtful and well researched packet that Barbara put together for us. What I would like to note too tonight is suggest that we set our, at our May meeting, that we will hold a public hearing on the increases to the water and sewer rates that were recommended by the town administrator. That would be a $2 increase in the base rate for water and sewer and a $1, or for water, and a $1 increase for the base rate for, other rates for the accelerator rate for water that would bring the base rate to $32 and would move the base rate from $30 to $32 and move the base rate for the accelerator from $12 to $13. And further, that we would adjust the waste water or sewer rates. The base rate would go from $52 to $56, an increase of $4. And the accelerator rate would go from $27 to $28, so an increase of $1. With the, any thoughts, comments?
I don't have any objections to.
Yeah, this would just be to advertise the public hearing.
I see, yes. No, but I think for the record, it might be pointed out that our neighboring communities often discount large users as opposed to charge more. So the town Culpeper, the town Front Royal offer discounts to large users, which is sort of the capitalist's web. And I don't know why it had been proposed that large users would pay more in Washington, Virginia. I'm just wondering if there's an explanation for that.
I don't have one else to talk about, but that's what I was going to say. This is not a good answer to your question. Okay.
Generally, in any business situation, the more you buy, the more you use, the less you have to pay.
I'm not close to that conversation.
Have a conversation.
Any other questions about that? All right, I would accept a motion to advertise for the public meeting, or public hearing at our May meeting to consider the adjustment in the water and sewer rates as enumerated.
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion is adopted. And with that, I will turn it over to my student colleague, our distinguished vice mayor, for an update on trail construction. As I was commenting on the way in, I was reminded on the way this evening as two young ladies were handling down the road.
Yes.
The voice on this is like handling down.
Terrible. So the contractor and I had pre-construction meetings with several of the property owners to clarify the specific route of the trail. And the contractor has already started doing some clearing brush in some of the areas. I noticed tonight that there are now materials on site and that he has posted white flags to show the route that the trail is going to be taken. I have an understanding from him that barring adverse weather, that he should be really starting. starting into the construction this week.
Did he have a rough idea on this?
He did not, I think it's, depending on weather and everything, but I think what I'll do is at the May meeting, if it hasn't been completed, it's not going to be a big project. So it should be a month or two at the most. What I can do is-
I was going to suggest that perhaps only we're finally finished, we could have a river, a-
You darn right we are.
And, and social or some things, seasonally appropriate, to celebrate another long running project. We'll wait till you're there for you.
There you go. And I, I just want to take a moment to, to thank three property owners, Mr. Mitchell, who is here, for allowing the great bulk of the trail to go through his property, and we are grateful, thank you, Drew, for doing that. And also to, to the county for allowing us to go through their property. And then, I can't remember the, I lost my, my train of thought, it's to the third, it's going to kill me, anyway.
Our generous donors.
And our generous donors, too, well, thank you. To the generous donor, Mr. Walton, and others who have given, Jimmy DeBert, that's the third property owner.
I'll just give you a full space. Thanks, thanks for the hard work to get this going, and thank you for the successful conclusion. Any, will we move to new business? Alright, so for, under new business, I would, I'll make a motion that we, might make one of the stretch, call it, that we, that the council approves the treasurer, Gail Swift, to serve as the-
Public funds.
Custodian of funds for the town of Washington. Is that, if those are right words?
Public funds.
Public funds. Custodian of public funds. Barbara will make sure it's right.
She, she sounded worried, she'll make sure it's-
May I suggest that we approach the bank and suggest we have two custodians of funds?
Well, we, we have, we have three of us that can sign. We have access.
You.
Four. Four. But we do need one person designated for their auditors.
And who are the others?
Myself.
Joe, Fred, and Brad. Can all sign a check, so.
So, and they're on the bank's list of-
Yes.
Signed as-
Yeah, yeah. They're all legal, they all have a signature for cars. It's just this one little quirky thing that we've never been asked to do before.
It's on the, in that's for all, but I just think I'm not getting that email, but-
Yeah.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we modify it to say yourself or the mayor, and then we can edit that perfectly.
Good idea.
In line with that, I can suggest.
I will second the motion and the addendum to the motion.
We have a second?
You just got one.
I gave you, I'm not a- Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, I'll ask for a roll, any additional discussion? Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 And with that, I will open the public forum. Comments from the public? Questions, concerns, one can hold the concerns, but questions.
I can bring it up.
Just, just kidding, alright? No, no comments from the public, I will close the public forum, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I see, move.
Alright, all papers say aye? We are adjourned, we will see you next month, for an extended session.